Paul Chaplinsky.
Here.
Michael Del Santo.
President.
Valerie DePaolo.
Here.
William Dietzick.
Here.
Tom Lombardi.
Here.
James Morelli. Christopher Palmieri. Christopher Pulis.
Here.
Victoria Triano.
I am here. Thank you very much. Let's rise for the prayer followed by the flag salute.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening asking for your direction and guidance. Keep us focused tonight on what is best for Suddington and her people. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. All right, may I have a motion for the minutes?
Madam Chair, if I may, Kathy, I just see Mr. Morelli wanted just to acknowledge that he is now in the meeting.
Oh, great. Good to have you, Jim. Thank you. Thank you. If you could just amend the minutes, please, Kathy. Thank you. May I have a motion on the minutes of last meeting, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Tom.
I will make a motion of the town council minutes from March 22, 2021.
Thank you. Is there a second?
This is Paul.
Okay, Paul. All those in favor? Any discussion? Any deletions or anything? Anybody opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Let's go right into Councilmatic Communications. I know there are folks that have some. Tom, would you like to take it? Go ahead.
Yes, please. Thank you. I just wanted to update the council and the public on an issue that I think is very important. It might be a few weeks premature as it does relate to the budget for fiscal year 2122. But I did have a very good conversation with the town manager last week, and I wanted to bring attention to a matter. You know, we've been talking a lot lately about forming committees and what's fair and how can we be better as a council? So I want to, for those of us on the council, it's page 191 on our budget book. You know, and at the last meeting, I challenged members of the public and even in my role on the Board of Ed Social Justice Group, I said, you know, we're open and willing to talk about issues. Let's take a look at how we can be better. What can we do as a council to, you know, put things out on the surface and have a positive discussion? The thing I want to talk to you about tonight is, and I forget how many years ago this was. It had to be over five years, but the state of Connecticut came with some findings on the softball facilities at the high school. So I'm actually going to just read what's in our budget book so that members of the public can have it. And I'll try to be as brief as I can. The State Department of Education Civil Rights Facility Review Report of Suddington High School indicated a number of areas that required code updates in order to comply with Title IV of the Civil Rights Act, Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972, Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, and the Americans with Disabilities Act. The administration is developing a plan to address the updates and phases. The first project will address improvements to the varsity softball field, especially as they apply to Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972 and the equity issues around the softball facility accommodations versus the baseball facility accommodations. Dugouts, bullpens, batting tunnel, new backstop and safety fence, accessibility improvements to dugouts, bullpens, and batting tunnels, design bidding construction. At the bottom of the notes say, "The Suddington Public School Administration, in conjunction with, I think it's Castle Brothers, Castle Brothers, is developing a plan for improvements, capital projects, and major renovations to the high school athletic facilities." At the time of this writing, the master plan has not been finalized. The SBS administration will continue to refine the master plan and bring the final recommendations forward when completed. The budget necessary to complete the master plan is projected at this time to be determined. So I bring this up tonight because I think it's great that we are putting this forward in our budget on the town side. And I'm really looking forward to pushing along this master plan. So I bring this forward tonight because I don't think we have a choice, actually, because of what I just read, to approve it this year. But I am, it's a very positive movement initiated by the town manager to at least make this initial investment. And again, this is a specific issue that we are going to do our best to address. So just a little introduction of this issue. So that's all I had this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have, it's very interesting that it is, it is actually coming to be, where hopefully it'll be addressed completely. Yes, Mike Del Santo.
Yeah, thanks. Tom, that's good stuff. Really looking forward to that happening. We all know high school sports are just phenomenal in Suddington, so they deserve the best up there, all team sports do. So that's good stuff. Thank you for sharing that with us. Madam Chair, very briefly, I just wanted to announce, we had our Public Works meeting last Wednesday, and I'll be discussing that later on during reported special committees. But I wanted to send a special congratulations to Mr. Bill Castarella, who is actually retiring on May 15th, who's been with the town water department for over 30 years. So I just want to wish him the best in his retirement. Another invaluable person, very big shoes to fill coming up for the water department. So we want to say congratulations to Mr. Castarella for a job well done. Always very professional, always has the answers for you. So like I said, just wanted to extend our congratulations to Mr. Castarella.
We have really been fortunate in that area.
Such a lengthy, long career.
Yeah, wonderful. Yeah, very good. Thank you, Mike, for bringing that up. Any other Councilmatic Communications? Yep, Jim Morelli?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of weeks ago, I was able to attend the funeral for John DeMello, and I wanted to make a special thanks to the Suddington, Keshir, Nagatuck, and Middletown Police Departments for their showing the support for him. It was a very honorable day and a very sad day. And again, I just wanted to say special thanks to his fellow officers for their show of support.
Excellent. Yes, it was quite moving. It was. As Chris Pulis.
Yeah, I just, nothing to report for Councilperson Communications, but Mr. Palmieri wanted me to send his regrets. This is school vacation week, and he's out of state right now. That's why he's not in attendance tonight.
Yeah, we miss him, but that's all right. We understand. If we had the week off, we would be there too. Paul?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had two items, one to build off of, you know, Chris was talking about school vacations. I just wanted to give a shout out to our educators who have, you know, bravely been working each and every day in our schools to keep our kids in school to the greatest extent possible and say, I hope that each of them has a wonderful and restful spring break. And I hope everybody's helping strong to finish up the year. So thanks to the teachers in our town. Also, Madam Chair, I had a chance last week, you know, I know that you're aware because we had some issues with the auto crimes resolution follow-up. We tried to pull together a meeting, a special town council meeting. However, we were unable to get that due to the availability of our local legislators. I did have an opportunity to attend Connecticut.
All right, Madam Chair, just a point of order. If everyone could just mute their phones that are not speaking.
Yes.
There's a lot of background. I'm hearing every other word. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. That is true. Please close your, mute your phones during the meeting until you're ready to speak. Thank you, Mike. Yep, go ahead, Paul.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, so I had an opportunity to speak at the Connecticut Judicial Committee last week to submit the resolution that the town of Suddington did put forward. So I sent the signed resolution to the committee and also asked them to consider collaborating and working together to, you know, look at especially our repeat offender laws with respect to juveniles and auto crimes, which seems to be the predominant issue that a lot of the professionals and our police departments are telling us. And, you know, good news, bad news, you don't always get what you, you know, what you want. But, you know, we didn't get the address on repeat offenders, which I believe is really what's enabling a lot of the activities that we see when it comes to these repeat offenders. However, they did take a few steps in the right direction, some small steps. One of them that I think is also important that they looked at adults who are enabling and encouraging juvenile offenders to do some of these automobile crimes. They specifically are putting in a recommendation for tougher legislation against those type of adults. So hopefully, hopefully, we see some movement on that in the future in the full legislature. And that's all, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Yes. Hang on just a second, Val.
Go ahead, Val.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So just a couple of things. I wanted to follow up on, a few meetings ago, I had talked about DECA at the high school and that they were honored, you know, with the national award. So I was able to speak to Sandy Spinella yesterday, and three of the students, Cooper Burdette, Max Hotchkiss, and A.J. Colwick, they are actually going to be able to compete nationally with a presentation of that business model that they did at the, with the school store, you know, for the, for the online apparel. So they're putting together a presentation, and depending on how that goes, they could end up maybe going, you know, going on to the finals. And then that will be, that would also be virtual. But so I just, you know, wanted to put that out there and, you know, just let them know that we really wish them the best of luck because in a year with COVID, you know, a lot of these events couldn't take place.
Right, right.
It's just great to see that they could, you know, that they're doing this.
Excellent. That's true. Someone else had, was ready to, oh, sure.
I just wanted to, you know, it's interesting what Counselor Lombardi is mentioning about the facilities. So, Tom, if I'm correct, so that was about five years ago that study came out that said what the, you know, what was needed?
Might be longer than five years, somewhere around that timeframe, though.
Okay, because I just want to point out, you know, it's, by, by, by many of the female athletes and coaches that coach female teams at the high school, it's, this is long overdue. And it's been this way for a long time, and I think it is time that, especially with Title IX. You know, the facilities need to be, they need to be brought up to snuff there. And we're probably lucky that there hasn't been, you know, much pushback on that. So I, I'm really happy, obviously, to see that, you know, we're going to go down that path as a town. So thanks for bringing that up, Tom.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Based on my comments and Councilman Pelosi, in the town manager or the town's budget, what I just read, it did say that the master plan has not been completed yet. Can we give a verbal acknowledgement to the town manager to look into that and say, can we expect a final plan? Is it coming in six months? Is it coming in a year? Can we do something to kind of push this along?
If I may, the board, the board is, the board is on it with the master plan. I did have a meeting with the superintendent, assistant superintendent, the athletic director. They are working on an overall plan, which will be perfectly blunt in the.
Oh, I think.
We felt, what we felt was, was an immediate concern. As you notice, $215,000 is in my budget. Assuming you approve the capital budget this year, $215,000 immediately will be spent this summer, hopefully, based upon what Mr. Lombardi talked about for the softball field. But the overall plan will be in the millions.
Okay, that's, well, you know, let's, let's get, let's, that's good that you're having those meetings. And I look forward to the final product. And as someone recently told me, not that this matters in the upgrades, but the girls' softball program has more state records than they do bleacher seats. I mean, it's not that that matters to push this along, but it's like Councilwoman DePaolo said, let's get this moving.
You know, I expect that you'll see it probably in the referendum package in '22, which is the Board of Education's referendum package for many items. You'll see this one too, because with number over a million dollars, we'd need a referendum vote. So that's what I expect to see. It would be November of '22. But the most, but the most immediate thing will be handled, assuming that my budget gets approved, my capital budget gets approved by the council. It was approved by the Board of Finance. But if it gets approved by the council, I would, I would suggest that Mr. Romano and the new superintendent will work very hard to start with the softball field as quickly as possible once the money becomes available.
Great.
And if I could just, yeah, I just wanted to mention that I was able to be on a meeting. I know it was, Mark, it was probably a couple of months ago now where this was all talked about with, you know, Board of Ed and Steve Riser, you know, they are, I know they're moving in the right direction. I was just at a softball game over the weekend, and it's, you know, the softball team has won 18 state titles from 1978 to the last couple of years. And, you know, the dirt is flying around on the field, and the girls are in no dugouts. Everybody has, the coaches have to turn their backs, and it's, it's just, it's just unbelievable.
Well, this is, this is the beauty of budget reallocation. As you know, the council has allowed me to do this for the last five budgets, and I plan to do it again this year. That budget reallocation money, which is, Tom assigned in government side, additional monies that we don't use this fiscal year, will be put toward the capital budget, this being one of our primary assignments. So you'll see it, obviously, at your public hearing on the 26th when Chairman Leary gives a presentation. And of course, you'll see it again the first meeting in May when you actually vote on the budget. So thank you.
Good. I'm just really glad, you know, I'm glad we're going to push this.
Me too. That's great. Very good. Anybody else? I have one thing, if we're all done. I wanted to let everybody know that this is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And what that means is when we pick up the phone and dial 911, there is someone at the end of the phone, a telecommunicator. And, you know, those folks are the first in the chain for emergency response. They are responsible for giving information to the police or the firefighter. They are responsible to assess the situation. I was speaking to one of them not too long ago, and, and he explained how there was an emergency phone call, and it had to do with a suicide, sadly, a suicide involving a gun. And, and the woman who was involved wanted to run out and help, and he had to say, no, no, you wait right there. The police are coming, because it was a gun call. These folks are in the direct line in the emergency chain. And so I want to just say thank you to the 12 dispatch officers that we have, and what a tremendous job they do. They keep their cool in every situation. They are trained and ready to respond, and we owe them a great deal of gratitude. So I wanted to mention that today, all 12, we thank you, and this is your week. So we want to recognize you. All right, so let's move on. Let's go on to reports of special committees. Let's start with Open Space.
Madam Chair, I'll be brief.
Oh, yes.
This is Paul.
Yep, of course.
The other mic.
The other mic.
I'm the mic that has hair, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Not Mr. Del Santo. So very short and brief, I think for Open Space, it's, it's important that we keep our focus on the referendum that's coming up, May the 4th, and really looking forward to continuing to have the public input sessions and providing people with any of the facts that, you know, that they think, they think are appropriate. We put together a great back sheet, so I think a lot of what's, what's needed and required is out there on the town of Suddington website, if anybody's looking for it. And please mark your calendars, and please ensure everybody gets a chance and gets out there and has their vote heard. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Very good. Thank you. Now we go to Public Works. The other mic, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Once again, or actually, just like Paul, I'm going to be fairly brief. This passed out today, and next Saturday at the transfer station, folks will be allowed to go to the highway department and get a pass for the transfer station. The regular business hours from 8:00 to 3:00 o'clock on Saturday, they can go to the highway department and grab a sticker if they've forgotten to get one during the week. And as always, between the hours of eight and three, they can, Monday through Friday, they can go down to the highway department and grab a transfer station ticket. During the, I mentioned it last meeting, but I'm going to mention it again, on June 4th, there's going to be another household hazardous waste drop-off that will also be at the highway department. The entrance will be through the transfer station. There'll be more to follow as the day comes closer with the actual traffic pattern to get to the household hazardous waste drop-off. That is for Suddington residents only, and that is Friday, June 4th, from 4:00 to 7:00. And as I mentioned earlier, Mr. Castarella is retiring, but before he goes, he wanted to let us know that the water department is working on drilling, the drilling phase of Well 10, which is out by Plainville, the Durham, sorry, Dunham Street Shuttle Metal Road area of Suddington. And interesting information, as usual, from the water department. There's only a few people in the state that are capable of drilling a well this size. So their, the completion date will be between 18 and 24 months, so they're going to begin working on that. Other than that, that's all I have. Any questions for Public Works? Mr. Pulis.
Yeah, go ahead. Chris Pulis?
Yeah, I just wanted to add a few things about Public Works, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman Del Santo.
Please, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so one of the subcommittees of the Public Works Committee is a committee that's been established to look into improvements on our linear trail. And we had a meeting last Tuesday, the 6th. And I just, a couple of things I wanted to share. First off, I want to just give a shout out and a word of appreciation to former Councilwoman Misselli, who is on that committee as a volunteer, and she has already gotten underway with looking for grants so that some of this work could be done that's proposed. You know, she's very active in the winter event that we have downtown in Plantsville, and the linear trail is used during that event. And so one of our goals is to put power on the trail. And she's committed to this and has been doing a lot of the legwork. And I'll share, because I just think that this is a great, a great initiative that's, that's going on in Public Works. We talked about the length of the linear trail and how this could be a massive project and how we're going to look at this in tiers. And so the first tier might be just to look at power between Suddington and Plantsville. Rather than to try to think big about the whole length of the trail, we look at the power. That's our first need for these festivals we have. And then maybe we look at lighting that section. And then maybe we look at some security measures in that, in that section. And so it's a work in progress. I'm thankful to Director Turnquist, who is going to be looking out to other towns that have linear trails to see if they've done any improvements so that we don't reinvent the wheel. But it's a promising, it's a promising initiative, and I'm sure there'll be more to report as we, as we move forward. Just wanted to add that in.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else with another hand? Tom?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Councilman Del Santo and Councilman Pulis. Just very quickly, Councilman Del Santo, on the June hazardous waste collection for Suddington residents. What kind of identification or what's the process going to be there? Maybe, if you don't know the answer, maybe for our next meetings, we can.
I do, yeah. Driver's license will be taken, and actually, Mr. Chaplinsky asked in that during the meeting to ensure that there's a sign out the road that says Suddington residents only. Because we don't want someone to get in line and be sitting there for an hour and a half or an hour to realize that they're not allowed to drop off waste.
Okay.
Yeah, more to follow. We still have a few more meetings before the event, so we'll, you know, I'll definitely ensure that we have a clear, some clear directions before we report once along.
Good.
I appreciate that. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Mr. Chaplinsky?
Yeah, I had two, two items on that, Madam Chair. I just want to thank Chris for bringing up the subcommittee. One of the reasons that, I just want to preface, it is very early on all this stuff. You know, what we're talking about in the subcommittee really is, is still preliminary. So it has to go through quite, quite the process to go from subcommittee to here, you know, get funded and so on and so forth. So I just want to ensure that everybody understands that that's not something that's imminent. The second thing is, and maybe this is for Mark for follow-up, you know, I was going to submit this as part of the, as part of the linear trail with the safety, but I think it might be worth doing sooner than later. One of the items that, that kind of came to my mind after being on Queen Street the last couple of weeks and seeing a couple of people trying to cross the road is that we have, what, what first got me noticing it was that there was somebody who seemed to have come from the end of the linear trail at the police station and gotten to Queen Street and was crossing Queen Street at the end of Lazy Lane. And there, there are push buttons for what looks like, you know, crossing the street. However, there's no electrical sign that says, you know, a walking person or a non-walking person or a time that tells you you can cross the road. It looks like they might have been legacy posts that are just posts, and the sign on each of the posts says, press for a green light. And so I think that the signs, first of all, are a little bit confusing because there's no green light, number one. And number two, there's no crosswalk painted on Route 10, which of all places to have a crosswalk, that would be a very important spot. So anywhere on Route 10, that is. So if it's possible to maybe have staff look at Route 10, and I know that that's not a town road, it's a state road, but certainly if there's safety with respect to crosswalks and respect to the crossing signals, if we can liaison with the state, that would be wonderful. I noticed at the bottom of Loper Street, at Price Chopper is the same. There's buttons there with no actual crosswalk on both sides. I think there's a light on one side, but no crosswalk on the road. So I think there's some opportunities for safety improvements on Route 10 there for pedestrians.
That's great. Mark, are you taking a note, Mark? Thank you so much. Yeah. I completely agree with that. We need to partner with the state on that road because it can be quite dangerous. I've seen people walking on Queen Street with a stroller, and, I mean, we really need to have them take a look at that. Thank you, Paul. Okay, anyone else? Let's go to the sewer.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Val.
Just, just quickly, for Counselor Chaplinsky, can you, I didn't quite understand what you were referring to in your first, when you said you, that's, that's not, in the subcommittee, that's not going to happen imminently.
I didn't say it wasn't going to happen.
Are you, I just didn't know what you were talking about. That's what I wanted to confirm.
They, sorry about that. Chris Pulis had mentioned the subcommittee of the subcommittee. So for which I'm leading and had given some information about our second meeting that we've had. We're still pulling together some analysis, and we plan to break each of the identified areas into work streams and investigate them further. I wanted to make sure that anybody who was watching or listening and heard the updates about grants and heard the updates about some of the trail improvement areas, that they understood that that is something that's still going to take us some time to work through. And none of those improvements are, you know, imminent at this moment. They're in the, they're in the planning phases. Each person is kind of looking at each of their own areas. But the output of that subcommittee will report to the, will report out to the Public Works Subcommittee. The Public Works Subcommittee then needs to review that, approve that, and send it to town council. Town council will, will obviously take any actions with respect to budgets and working with staff, so on and so forth.
Right, right. I understand, I understand the process. I understand the process, but I just want to make sure that, that what, the work that's being done, looking into the lighting or that work is going to continue.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, no doubt. It's definitely continuing. Yeah. I just wanted to make sure we set expectations on timing, Val.
Okay. I just want to clarify, because I gave the report. Last Tuesday at the meeting, Councilwoman Misselli came forward, and, or forward, Councilwoman Misselli came forward with her work on the grants. And she expressed to Public Works Director Turnquist that if we're looking at next December as a time to have power there, you know, we, we need to be working towards that basic tier power along the path. That's what she said. That was what the people that were present in the meeting said, yes. That's what she said. That was what the people that were present in the meeting said, yes, let's go at a very, look, look at this first step as something that's tangible and manageable, and let's try to get it done for December. Mr. Chaplinsky wasn't there, so he might not have got, he might, their summary of the meeting report might not have been clear. But there was a consensus of the people that were there that we were going to try to work for at the very base, basic, basic point, just to get some power on there. And then moving forward, because it's such an immense project, we would look at it in tiers. And we would say, okay, what's the next thing? Once we can establish stage one, what's the next thing? And to Mr. Chaplinsky's point, we said our next step was to reconvene in May and to, and to come to some consensus as to the timing of those tiers. But I just don't, I, I want to make sure that Mrs. Misselli's work does not go unnoticed. She, she's working very diligently on behalf of the town and the town's organizations and the businesses that participate in the Winter Fest and the, and the Italian Fest that use that power. She's working on it and she's looking at the timeline. Thank you.
Grants are always good, so we'll see how that all progresses. Let's move on to the sewer committee, please. Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I mean, number one item always with sewer is the plant progress. So things are looking good. So my understanding, and I don't want to translate it incorrectly, is that the plant has been tested and everything seems to be working. I don't have the science behind that, but that's basically what I was told. We also had a, an approval for a bid for the Plantsville Pump Station, which will subsequently come to the council. But other than that, that's all I have. Val wants to add, she can feel free.
Thanks, Bill. I, I'm just, I'm just laughing because we don't understand the, all the ramifications of these tests. But yes, it, it sounded like they had done a, a day of testing and things were looking good. So they did talk about the fact that they, they'll test over thirty days. And if that looks really good, they may not need to do another, another thirty days. But I think it's just great that the plant is moving forward, you know, through COVID. There's really been no delays. So thanks, Bill.
Okay, any, any further questions? Hearing done, let's move on to the Town Manager's Report and Communication.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to go, to go what Bill was just talking about, I will be coming to you with a recommendation on the pump station on the twenty-sixth. And as I've talked to probably more than half of you already, I'll be recommending a funding mechanism for the pump station. So that'll be at your April twenty-sixth meeting. Okay, the first thing I have is two minutes of the, of the Board of Finance. The first one is the March eighteenth meeting. The meeting mainly was the Board of Vets' presentation to the, to the Board of Finance. But we also had a public hearing, which the administration asked for a modification, which is a shift from contingency to the Highway Parks line item for approximately a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which they unanimously approved. The second meeting, which was the most important meeting that they have any year, is their March thirty-first meeting. That's the one where they review and they recommend the budget to you. I'll have to be a little bit more specific, but John Leary will be presenting to you at your, at your April twenty-sixth meeting. And that'll be your public hearing for the budget. But if we just go through it, for the capital plan, they did approve, as submitted by the manager's budget for year one of the capital plan, twenty-three million, six hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars. For the sewer fund, they, they approved the manager's recommendation of five million, seven hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars. For animal control, they approved the manager's recommendation of two hundred and sixty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars. For general government, they reduced their manager's recommendation by a hundred thousand dollars. The budget would be fifty-six eight dollars. And with the Board of Education, they reduced the, the Board of Education's recommended budget by four hundred thousand dollars for one hundred and two million, ninety-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars. So that'll come to you, obviously, per the charter, the next step. Also, during the meeting, thanks to Bill and his committee, the, the sewer committee asked for and received the recommendation of the Board of Finance to allocate a hun, one million dollars from the undecided sewer fund balance for lining of the old borough sewers. As you know, probably for the last four or five years, if you've been on the sewer committee, you've heard it. If you heard, if you've listened to me about capital, I've also explained that those, those clay sewer lines keep us up at night. So with Bill's committee, they've recommended, instead of the five-year plan that were originally put together, they want to allocate more money toward it. So we're hoping to complete the project within three years. So the Board of Finance approved of that. So if you approve their minutes, you're also approving that action. Let's see, the other, the other item that was of note was that we needed to use a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in contingency for police overtime. To no great surprise, the police had a task force, which they've explained to you what the task force is for. They've been working diligently on that, and there is some overtime cost involved. So they've asked for, and I, I recommend to the Board of Finance, the hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of overtime, which will carry them through June thirtieth. So that is the Board of Finance minutes. Any questions on either one of the meetings?
Any questions?
If not, the Vice Chair asked, asked last meeting for me to get an update on the status of the bus service to the town of Southington's northern region. Like everything else in the state of Connecticut over the last year, COVID has really just ground everything to a halt. So you can read his report. They are continuing to study it. They're continuing to work on it. My staff will obviously may monitor it. But if there's any questions on Mr. Grupon's report, in essence, it says they understand that the town of Southington is interested. But at this point, there really hasn't been much, much movement. So any questions on that?
Mark, just a quick question?
Yep.
Were, at the time, I know this was a little while ago, were, were ending, were any funding opportunities looked at or it never got to that point?
Well, actually, they, they explained to us that, that they were going to look at it from a funding standpoint because what they, all they needed to do was, was move a current route to the south from Bristol to Southington, running down West Street, down West Queen Street. The cost was going to be putting, putting some sort of weather structure up at the Bob's Plaza on North Queen Street, and that was really the only cost. But everything, but the whole point of it is that they have to do a study to see whether there'll be enough usage for it. So that really hasn't gone very much further. But this, if I remember correctly, they talked about this would be the first step, and then if there was enough service, they might talk about approaching the council for moving it farther south into Southington.
Okay, thank you.
And I apologize, I missed, I missed my one of them. B, in my, in my request to the council last December, I got Memorial Day wrong. I thought Memorial Day was the weekend of the four, twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. It's not. It's the weekend of thirty-first. So I had you, I have your meeting scheduled for Tuesday, the twenty-fifth. It, there's no purpose for that. So I'm asking for a vote to move it back to Monday, which should have been in the first place. So I apologize for that, but I want to do it now so that it won't be a special meeting. It'll be a regular meeting. So if you approve it, Kathy will send out all the notices the next day or so to make sure that it becomes a regular meeting. Any questions?
I already made plans that Monday night, Mark, sorry.
In that case, in that case, the meeting will go without Mr. Del Santo. So any questions on that? The last item I have for you tonight is something that I know we've discussed numerous times in the executive session. And I see my partner in crime, Sergeant Solarno, right there. This is the, the Police VIBA. Now, a VIBA really is a post-employment medical plan. Now, what, what does that mean? That means that the, the police themselves have had for many years a situation where a police officer retires. Let's assume they retire at forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, somewhere in that, that category. This allows them to have a fund, which is funded not only by the police officers themselves, but also a couple of dollars for each hour they work special duty. That being said, the fund has got substantial amounts of money in it. The plan is to transfer that money to, to the town. The town would run the VIBA through a third-party administrator, obviously. And with that being said, we would then take over that part of it. If, if you remember in executive session, the documents in front of you, the taxpayers are very much protected. They will not be affected by it. But what it does is it allows the town to take over the administration. So as the turnover of the, I'm sorry, Steve, the older police officers leave the force, who've been managing this, we, we now have a base of, that someone who understands. And no matter what the turnover is at the PD, the fund itself will have a consistent manager. Now, that being said, not that I said to the sergeant what's in it for me, but I did say, how does this benefit the town? So we did speak about the fact that, that he agreed a hundred percent that there's certain roads in town that we felt that the town personnel who are trained as flag people could do the job without hiring special duty police officers. So we did come to a conclusion. We worked with the, the safety officials at the police department and came up with approximately seventy percent of the town roads, that when the town does projects, and that town, I mean, the town sewer water is on these roads. So it is a, it is a situation where I think the town takes over this particular aspect for administration. It stabilizes that part of it. And I think in the future, starting in July of twenty-twenty-three, we can move forward and save the taxpayers a substantial amount of money when it comes to special duty police officers. Now, as part of that savings, which will, which would be substantial, a fixed amount gets put into the fund to help balance it off also. So that being said, I know I explained to everybody in the executive session, probably to, to your boredom. But I'll be happy to answer any questions. And Sergeant Solarno is here also to answer any questions. Are there any questions, Madam Chair?
Let me just turn it over to the council. Anyone in the council have a question on this matter? Paul?
And just for the record, Madam Chair, and I don't know if, maybe this is for Sergeant Solarno, maybe through the town manager. You know, this is, it seems to be a win-win for our police family and also for the, for the town of Southington and the residents and the taxpayers. But I definitely would like to hear on the record, you know, I'm assuming that, you know, when you make changes like this, not everybody is going to be on board, but do we have, you know, do we have the support from the police department as a whole? You know, are they, are they comfortable with the proposal that's been put forward? Because I think it's important that, you know, we're saving in one area, we're helping in another area, but that collectively, everybody feels whole. And me, I'm not sure, Mr. Town Manager, if you want to answer that or if Sergeant Solarno?
Well, that was, I'll, I'll answer it first on the town side, but Steve and I worked on this for over two years. And we both said the same thing is that neither one of us would push forward to the Board of Finance and especially to the council unless his group and, and I felt comfortable that the taxpayers, it's a benefit to them. And Steve felt it was a benefit to, to, to hit the people he represents. And I can honestly say that both of us came out of this thinking that this is, this is a win-win. It doesn't happen very often, but I won't speak for Steve. But I know from a town standpoint, we think this is beneficial for the taxpayers, and I'll let the sergeant speak for himself.
First of all, I want to thank the town manager for about two and a half years of having to deal with me and his patience with me. But my group voted on this maybe a few months ago, and it was almost unanimous approval. So it, it was, as the town manager said, it was a win-win, and that does not happen that often when it comes, when you're dealing with unions and towns and town government. But it was in our group, there was a few people abstained who weren't in the fund, who do not participate in it. But other than that, it was a unanimous vote. We did it. I mean, almost a unanimous vote, I should say. So, yeah, it went through with flying colors through the men and women of the police department.
Well, that's great. Well, so, so thank you. Thank the police department and thank you to the town manager for working so hard and so long to come to a, a solution that was good for both sides.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I just want to add, yes, go ahead, Val.
Yeah, I just, I just want to reiterate that. I just want to, I want to thank the town manager and Sergeant Solarno because, you know, when we reviewed this and talked about it in executive session, it really does seem like it's a win-win for, for everyone. And just a quick question, it would start, if we vote, if we vote to approve this tonight, does this fund get set up July one of this year?
The fund, the fund, yeah, the fund gets set up. The road part of it doesn't go into effect until July one, twenty-three, but it's set up for July one of twenty-one.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to add my thank you to the police department and the town manager. You know, whenever there's change, it can be very difficult. But working together like you have Sergeant Solarno and the town manager, it really is going to be quite beneficial to this community. And we hope that, to the retiring police officers who every day stand in the, in between the good guys and the bad guys. And we appreciate their service and their dedication. And I think this is a great idea. Congratulations. We were going to be voting on it shortly, but I just think it's a wonderful presentation and great for everyone. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Madam Chair, obviously, thank you, thank you, Steve. It, I would say it was a pleasure, but not all two years, two and a half years it was a pleasure. Most of it was. That being said, Madam Chair, we do have executive session with Hart and I pretension two matters. Attorney Sheffy will be in that with our town attorney and myself. So that's my report and answer any other questions that you may have.
Anyone have any questions for the town manager before we move on? Okay, thank you. I don't see any. Thank you very much. Let's move on to the town, to the town's attorney's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have one item on my report today, and it's the fire department's increase in volunteer tax abatement. Currently in our town charter, we have an ordinance that governs the volunteer tax abatement, which includes volunteer firefighters. For reference, it's section three seventy-five dash seven in our town charter. This ordinance also coincides with Connecticut General Statute Section twelve dash eighty-one W, and it basically mirrors this general statute. For the general public and for the council, if you don't know, a tax abatement is basically a reduction of taxes that an individual or corporation would pay. We do have a letter here, I believe it's in your packet, from Chief Paul, the fire chief, stating that on March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, the Board of Fire Commission's meeting voted unanimously to increase the volunteer firefighter tax abatement to a maximum of two thousand dollars for a full share and one thousand dollars for a half share. Basically, this increase is in line with the new public act passed by the House and Senate, which is number nineteen dash thirty-six. So what they're asking for is a change in our ordinance to be in line with the state statute. So the changes would be in section A of three seventy-five dash seven, which would change the maximum abatement from the current fifteen hundred dollars to two thousand dollars. And it also would change the partial share from the current seven fifty to a thou, to fifteen hundred and the current one thousand full share to two thousand. Also, they're asking for a change of section F, which just basically makes this would be enacted with the October first, two thousand twenty-one grand list, it would take effect, which would affect the taxes for July of two thousand twenty-two and the January installment of two thousand twenty-three. So with the request to change this ordinance, we'll be asking you to schedule a public hearing on this later on in the old business to vote on that, to schedule the public hearing. Do you have any questions or need any further clarification on what the fire commission is asking?
I do have a question, and my question is, how many volunteer firefighters right now would be open to this? That would be affected by this increase? Maybe, maybe Chief Paul would have the accurate count for the volunteers.
Vicki, before we ask Chief Paul about that, just to expand on this. So the process, what happens is by June twenty-first of each year, the, the fire chief is going to report to the task collector how many months of certified service that each volunteer has had and who's available to get the partial share or the full share. So that's done every year. And then the tax collector will then calculate how it's done. What the number is right now, I don't know. And that may be something that if Chief Paul would be kind enough to interject that, help us out.
Yeah, Chief Paul, are you on the line? I see you're on the line. Could you give us that information about the, the number of firefighters, volunteer firefighters to sort of be involved in?
I'm sure it does change quite frequently, so I will get you those numbers.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Just so they can be accurate.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Anyone else have any questions? Yep, Paul?
Madam Chair, for the town attorney, just because I know you've updated this in the past, Jeremy, but there was a newspaper article about the Andrew Street property. Maybe you just want to comment on the current Maybe you just want to comment on the current status and the future of that as well. It made that it was in the headlines in the newspaper this past week.
I I just want to make sure that it's okay that we do that in open session.
I would just ask Madam Chair, if there's any more questions on at least this issue before we touch on anything else. Sorry.
Madam Chair, I have a quick, I have a quick question on the actual what we're going to send for a public hearing. Jeremy, when, I'm looking at the public act, so it's like a two thousand nineteen public act. When was it previously last amended? I mean, it seems like a pretty big jump for a cost of living increase and I'm not against it. I'm just more curious, is it one of those things that's, you know, a vestige of like the nineties or what? When, you know, any context or history behind it?
Based on our town charter, it's been updated periodically, certain sections. Looking at it right now, section C was amended in two thousand sixteen, D was amended in two thousand nineteen. So I'm not sure exactly when the the last time the state statute or the state act has been updated offhand. But it looks like based on our charter, we have amended it a couple of times as recently as two thousand nineteen.
All right, so it's not like it's a twenty year thing, it has been amended.
Yeah, that's correct.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? There's a question on the floor about the Andrew Street property. Is there any questions other than that? I don't hear any other questions. So Jeremy, if you want to just address what you can.
Sure, Paul, I usually don't and it's, you know, our policy not to speak too much about pending litigation that's currently going on. But I can tell you that there is a court date scheduled for May third and that would be the second hearing on this in the Superior Court. So really, that's all I can say right now publicly about any pending litigation that's going on.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anything else, Jeremy, you wanted to report on?
Nothing else at this time, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. Let's move on to public communications. Paul will let you in to speak. First, we'll go with the computer folks on computer and then we'll go to the phones. Madam Clerk, will you be the timekeeper this evening, please? And make sure everybody's getting their five minutes. And so let's get started, public communication. I ask that that your remarks are respectful. We will be respectful in return and that we try to keep politics as little as possible during this segment. It really has to do with your issues within the community. So is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening? Please let Paul know.
Madam Chair, if you're doing the computers first, the the folks who are on the computer may type in the chat that they would like to speak and get in line. If that's okay with you.
Sure, that's perfect.
And then they can take themselves off of mute whenever they're ready.
Okay, very good. I don't see anyone on chat. Is that correct, Paul? There's no one?
Correct, Madam Chair.
Okay, we'll give it just another thirty seconds or so, just in case you're having some difficulty if you're on on your computer.
And I can confirm, Madam Chair, that I see that the chat functionality is functioning.
Great, great. Okay, hearing no one coming forward on their computer, Paul, why don't you take it from here?
Yeah, and then Madam Chair, it looks like there's only three call in users. So if there's a call in user who would like to speak, they can press star six and unmute their phone and state their name and address for the record.
Great. Anyone wishing to speak? I really think this is a record. No one? All right, then we're going to move on. Thank you, everyone, for being a part of this meeting, even if you didn't want to speak. We appreciate you being here. Let's move right on to old business, item eight, action on the self insurance fund balance policy.
So moved, this is Councilman Pulis. I'd like to move to approve the updated language on the self insurance fund balance policy.
And I I will second that, Madam Chair.
Okay. Could we have a voice vote on this, please? Would you call the roll, please?
Just a discussion first.
Yes, please, yeah.
Yeah. Councilman Pulis and myself introduced this after the last meeting. I don't think we received any questions on it. It is, I think it's a good framework for the council to have. And that's all I really have on it. It's been certainly been an interesting year. Yeah, like over, yeah, about a year now on self insurance. So thank you all for reviewing this and and putting some some thought into it.
I'll just, yeah. Chris. I'll just add that what we've done is we took existing language and we expanded it and we made it more detailed so that it, we we had more fiscal protections in there. So we're doing what we said we would always do, but we detailed exactly the process of doing it so that we wouldn't be surprised with with a big funding cliff and that we were doing responsibly. That that's in the summary of what we intended to do here.
Thank you, Chris. Val, your hand was up.
Just a quick question and and I think the plan looks great. Thank you both for your your work on this. So in the section where it talks about replenishment of the floor shortfall, adding an appropriation from the town's general fund, that would conform with our town charter, right? There would be no, there'd be no issue of doing that.
That is, that is correct. Any any shortfall, any any town accounts, any town responsibilities would, if it didn't, if it had to come out of my contingency or it would come out of the undated fund balance.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this motion before us? Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Paul, did you have your hand up?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, very good. Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Chaplinsky?
Absolutely.
Del Santo?
Yes.
DePaolo?
Yes.
Dietzick?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Pulis?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes, thank you. Item B, action on the reports of the Board of Finance. Mark, will we need two motions for this?
I'll make a motion to approve the the reports, the actions of the report of Board of Finance, March eighteen, two thousand twenty one.
I'll second, Madam Chair.
Okay, very good. Any other discussion on this matter? Hearing no discussion, let's move the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, any abstentions? I hear none, they pass as unanimously. Thank you very much. Action on the report from March thirty first.
Motion to approve the actions of the report of Board of Finance, March thirty one, two thousand twenty one, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Madam Chair, Mike Del Santo.
Thank you, Mike. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this matter? Hearing none, then we will move the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed or abstaining? Hearing none, the pass is unanimous. Thank you so much unanimously. Thank you. Item C, action on the town council meeting for May twenty fifth. It's just a matter of the date change.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we change that meeting from twenty fifth to Monday, May twenty fourth.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Tom. All those in favors, any discussion on it?
We're excluding Councilman DeSalle Del Santo on that, right?
Well, I was able, I was getting my hair perm that night. I was able to move it. I'll do a different night.
Okay, any other discussion, meaningful discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Kathy, you'll take care of that.
Kathy, you'll take care of that tomorrow.
Yep, very good. And more important even than the date that we just voted on is item D, the action on the Verba agreement with police.
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, to approve that.
Okay, do I have a second? Chris Pulis made a second, made second. Is there any further discussion on this? Do you want to ask any questions on it while we still have Sergeant Solerno and the town manager here? Anyone at all?
Madam Chair, I just, I just want to congratulate the town manager for their hard work and dedication and working on this. Being a dummy, I was, I don't have any questions. So I understand it and I thank them for making it very clear on what's what's what they're doing going forward. But thank you very much, Sergeant and Mark.
Very good. Any other statements at all? I would very much like to have a voice vote on this as well, Kathy, if we could, please. So there's a motion and a second, we're moving the motion right now. Go ahead, Kathy.
Chaplinsky?
Absolutely.
Del Santo?
Yes.
DePaolo?
Yes.
Dietzick?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes, nice work.
Pulis?
Yes.
Triano?
Absolutely, yes. Thank you to all concerned, this is a huge win and for everybody. Thank you very much. Moving right along, Chris, did you have a question?
No, I just wanted to move on item E, if that would be okay with you, Madam Chair.
Item E.
I'd like to make motion to schedule the public hearing for the, in the volunteer tax abatement.
Very good.
Madam Chair, with the motion, normally we pick our poison. The next, the next meeting is your public hearing for the for the budget. Do you want to do it then or the following meeting, which is your vote on the budget? So I'll let you choose which one you want to do it at.
Well, Chris, since you made a motion, why don't you choose?
You know, I think we should just do it at the next meeting, Madam Chair.
Okay, so that'll be to your motion, Mr. Pulis, would be seven PM virtual on the twenty sixth of April. Is that correct?
Yes.
And I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Okay.
And you're seconding it, Paul?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, very good. Any other discussion on this? Chris?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment briefly. As a member of the volunteer firefighter recruitment committee that Chairman Wilson asked me to serve on several years ago. This is a no brainer for town. We have the benefit of a combined volunteer career volunteer of volunteer career force, works well in our town. And we've been working diligently, Commissioner Moyes, I think I saw his name on this call and Al Ursa, who's a resident also supervising on the committee, to find ways to attract and retain our volunteer firefighters. And this is just another way that demonstrates to those people who choose to serve in a voluntary capacity that we value and appreciate their service. And I just think that this would be a great step forward for our department.
Very good. The motion before us, though, is just the scheduling of a public hearing. I'm sure we'll be able to speak more on that after the public hearing. And so let's move forward. All those in favor for scheduling a public hearing at our next meeting in April signify by saying aye. Any opposed? I see it passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. That's great. Moving along to item nine, new business tax, tax refunds.
Madam Chair, I will make a motion that we approve tax refunds that are outlined in our packet.
Madam Chair, this is Bill Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Appointments, the commission for persons with disabilities and there's a total of nine appointments. And we're going to start with Mike Del Santo. Would you give us the, yes?
Thank you very much. I'd like to nominate the following members for, the following six people for the persons with disability. Mr. Brian Allahan, Attorney William Weber, Lauren Dietzick, Michael Early, Nicole Ricardone and Maureen Jane.
Okay, very good. And Mr. Pulis, would you give us your nominations, your three nominations?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to nominate Ryan Rogers and Karen Cappell, who currently served. And also would like to nominate Megan Mealy of five, five forty five West Street as as a new member.
Very good. So although that is the slate that we have before us, do I have a motion to approve? Yes, Jim?
I have the motion to approve.
Oh, great. Okay, second?
Second.
Thank you. No, you made a motion to approve, Jimmy. You can't, you can't make the, you can't second your own motion.
Superman.
So do I have a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Val. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? But is there anyone who is abstaining this evening?
Madam Chair, I will abstain with respect to Lauren Dietzick, that is my sister.
That's a very close relationship. I'm glad you did that, Mr. Dietzick. Anyway, all right, so noted. Please, Kathy, so note that that abstention. All right, very good. Moving on to item two, the Conservation Commission. We have two members for a four year term expiring twenty twenty five. Paul, go ahead.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you very much. I'd like to nominate the reappointment of Christopher Barrowey and also make a nomination to appoint Michael Salesky of eighty six Welch Road for also the appointment to join the Conservation Commitment, Commission.
Okay, thank you very much. Do I have a second? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you don't have a second. Yes, Mark.
For for our ordinances, I hereby appoint those two individuals to the Conservation Commission for a four year term to expire twenty twenty five.
Thank you, Mark. I didn't mean to step on your toes. I know you.
That's why I get the big bucks, I get these big appointments here.
I know. Item three for Conservation Commission alternate. Chris, you have someone, Chris Pulis, right?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I'd like to nominate as an alternate, Mr. Jim Sullivan.
Okay, thank you. And.
Madam Chair, I hereby appoint Jim Sullivan as the Democratic alternate to the Conservation Commission to a term expiring April, twenty twenty five.
Thank you so much. And I believe on our side, we are going to ask for continuance. We are not seating anybody this evening as an alternate. We anticipate next meeting, we will have an alternate seated, so. Very good. Is that true, everybody?
I need a motion to table that, Madam Chair.
I'd like to make a motion to table that, Madam Chair, till the next meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mike Del Santo, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. So yes, you have that now, Mark. Now, we're going to adjourn into executive session barring the press and public. However, we are inviting Attorney Tony Sheffy, our our town's attorney, Jeremy Taylor and the town manager, Mark Shoda. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the purpose is heart and knife retention matters.
And there's no, and there's no action after.
There'll be no action outside of the executive.
No action. All right, everyone, see you on the other side. Thank you, everyone who came and attended this evening. And we'll, we'll see all of us in executive session. Thank you. Bye bye.